Good morning, and I'd like to call the Ninth Osage Nation Congress to order. Today's date is March 4, 2025, and the time is 10:02 a.m. Congresswoman Whitehorn, could you please take care of the prayer?
Yes, ma'am, Speaker, thank you. Father God, we just thank you for the rain. We thank you for this day that you sent the water to water our earth and get our spring going on with some nice green coming up, Lord. And we're just in awe of your creation and what you do for us, Lord. We just thank you today that you're a mighty and you're an awesome God and that you love your people, Lord, that you're a loving God, and that you've always looked out for us humans here on earth, Lord. I just want to ask that you be with us today when we're considering important issues of the nation and voting on measures that affect our people, Lord. Give us wisdom, give us understanding, Lord. Help us work together in a peaceful way. I just ask that you be with those that are in mourning and that have ailments, Lord. You're the healing God, and we just ask that you help them in this time, Lord. I just thank you for your blessings, and I thank you for all of your provision. All these things I ask in Jesus's name. Amen.
Clerk, roll call, please. Congressman Big Horse?
President.
Congresswoman Good Fox?
President.
Second Speaker Hamilton?
Here.
Congressman Keen?
President.
Congresswoman Lemon? Congressman Maker?
Here.
Congressman Potts?
President.
Congresswoman Redcorn?
Here.
Congresswoman Reevarde?
Here.
Congressman Tillman?
Here.
Congresswoman Whitehorn?
Here.
Assistant Chief Walker?
Here.
Speaker Shaw? President, we do have a quorum. We're now on approval of the Journal. Please take a moment to review the Journal of March 3, 2025. Clerk, I have a question. meet beginning at 1:00 p.m. Thank you. meet beginning at 1:00 p.m.
Speaker, I move to approve the Journal as amended.
All those in favor of the motion, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, please say no. The Journal of March 3, 2025 has been approved. We are now on reports of select committees.
Madam Speaker.
Yes, Congressman Potts?
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to enter the Committee of the Whole to discuss the resolution of this Congress in regard to our relationship with the American federal government.
Thank you.
There is a motion and a second to enter into the Committee of the Whole. All those in favor of the motion, please say yes.
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 Any opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Thank you. Congressman Potts?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and to the body. I appreciate entering into Committee of the Whole. There's been discussion regarding a resolution that may or may not be introduced. I feel like this is a decent venue for us to state some of our concerns, state some of our desires to move forward, and I appreciate the body giving us that opportunity. I hope that we can talk it out and see where we want to go.
Thank you. Congresswoman Whitehorn?
Thank you. I'm sponsoring the resolution that has not been read in yet. I filed it yesterday morning. As I think you guys know, I think it's important that on these matters that affect our Osage Agency, that our nation make a combined strong statement about our feelings or about how it affects our people. This resolution is, that's what it's been written for. The reason it's come so late in the session is because all of these things started happening, coalescing, the Friday before our session started, I believe, that affected us at our agency. So that's when I put the notice to members that I was going to attempt to amend the proclamation to put the resolution in. When I made the motion, I got a second. We voted to go ahead and entertain this resolution. It took a long time drafting. I was trying not to get in front of our other bodies, the Minerals Council, whose services are the lion's share of use of our agency. And I didn't want to step out ahead of them, but I still feel like our nation uses the services for our people who have restricted lands and our trust lands. And so that's why I went ahead and started drafting it and filing it. I had the notification or the alert that our Minerals Council was coming out with a statement about this, and I wanted to see what that said. I talked to the Chairman of the Minerals Council this morning. Their statement has publicly been released. He believes that it follows, that this resolution falls in line with exactly what they're saying. Not exactly, but it falls in line, it contours what they're saying. And he's put a call out to members, and three of the members of their eight body agree with this statement, and I know the members that he said, I won't name them on the air. And they're diverse, and they agree that they would like to have us pass this resolution. Mr. Aldridge called me this morning on behalf of the chief to find out what the intentions were with this resolution, and I explained to him, as you know, where we are getting this out the end of session. As we were talking, I just got a text message from Mr. Aldridge that says that the chief is amenable to your resolution in its current form, and he would sign it as it stands now if the Congress is willing to endorse it and send it for his signature. So that's what I have from Chief Standing Bear. He would sign it in its current form. I have asked you guys your thoughts on it. I have gotten some feedback to change some language in it, which I think strengthens it, but it doesn't substantially change what the resolution says. And I am so willing to amend and improve it as much as we can. So that's where I stand on this. I had some discussion with other members about going into a Committee of the Whole to see what the consensus is. So I'm letting you know right now, I have the consensus of the Chairman and two other members of the Minerals Council. I have the consensus of the chief on this resolution. And in my opinion, we should go ahead and work on it, and I think it's something that should come out tomorrow so we don't make any hasty mistakes on trying to put amendments into it on the fly. So that's where I stand on it, and I will yield the floor. Thank you, Speaker, for letting me speak.
Congressman Potts, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I believe some of you have heard Congresswoman Whitehorn and I discuss this, so maybe nothing new, but I think the public needs to hear it as well. I support the resolution. I think the wording is, I've already offered my feedback. I think some changes have been made. Probably going to seek more once I see another draft. But here's where we break, the author and I. I had requested a resolution from legal counsel before we knew that our superintendent was being let go. I think it was the thing that triggered me was the layoffs at the BIA, because that would impact our ability to function as a nation as well. And so at that time, I had requested just one to address the BIA and, you know, tongue in cheek said, "And anything else that comes down the pike in the next couple of weeks." Turns out, we lost our superintendent. I'm going to quit speaking it, because it seems to happen, not that what I said matters, but last week I said, you know, "Let's hold off on this resolution, because next week it could be the end of our agency." I said that, and here we are. And so I'll reiterate, we're a month and what now, 10 days in? I don't know that this Congress is ready to address this problem. Congressman Whitehorn, I agree. Yeah, I'm mad that they let Mr. Tremblay go. I think that was short-sighted. Throw all the adjectives at it. Put them all in a resolution. It's reckless, name them all. I think it's incredibly short-sighted to close our agency as well. But there is more that's impacting us than just that. They're closing BIA offices throughout the nation. They're laying off BIA employees everywhere. They're laying off IHS employees everywhere. I spoke with Congresswoman Good Fox this morning. Shocker, they're closing National Weather Service things. And I said, you know, "That doesn't really impact us," but it does. We spent hundreds of thousands of dollars last year on storm shelters because one of our communities got taken out by a tornado. That matters, and every single one of these things need to be addressed, not just our superintendent and our Osage Agency. Those are important. I believe that. But we have a lot to address, and if our chief is going to Washington, D.C. to talk about it, I misunderstood, I thought he was going with him, our chief needs to go to Washington, D.C., and you know what? We should be right there following him. I think more than just these two issues needs to be addressed, and my concern is, if we address these two issues, it tacitly implies that we're okay with everything else that's going on, and I'm most certainly not. And I, as one member of Congress, want there to be unequivocal evidence that we're opposed to almost everything that's impacting Indian country right now, and not just on our behalf. I put out earlier, "Attack on sovereignty anywhere is an attack on sovereignty everywhere," and I believe that. I saw last night on the news, Congresswoman Whitehorn, I hear the chief's behind this today. Last night, we told the world on the news, "We're still waiting on a plan," that there's organized chaos to this, and our chief wants a plan from Washington, D.C. They're not going to give us a plan. They're cutting. They're burning, and they don't care. I don't see a coherent plan from our executive branch on how we're going to address this, and I don't blame them that much, because I don't know that anybody has a plan. I don't know that anybody thought it was going to be this bad. But I don't know that I still don't know that I support a resolution just addressing these two issues. I would much rather hold off until our spring session, not that we're going to have a better understanding of what's going on, because again, I don't think there is an organized plan from Washington, D.C. I think they're just doing it to do it at this point, based on some AI model. So I don't know if we're going to be more equipped to address it in the spring, but I don't know that I support just addressing two issues at this time. That's where I stand on the issue.
Assistant Chief, you have the floor.
Thank you, Speaker. I hear you, Congressman Potts, and I read the resolution, and the thing that resonated the most with me was the fiduciary responsibility that the United States government has to the Osage Nation. That's legitimate. And it's not just a matter of us supporting the two things that have affected us so far. And this is just me speaking as the Assistant Chief and a longtime elected official with an opinion. There would be nothing that would prohibit us from passing another resolution in the spring addressing additional issues that may be coming down the pike that we're not aware of. I think now would be a good time to go ahead and make a statement. Am I optimistic that it's going to change anything? No. And the grim reality of it is, we have a legitimate lawsuit, in my opinion, but the line for litigation might wrap from here to Washington, D.C. at this point. So I have other thoughts on that. When I looked at the resolution, I didn't see a signature line for the chief. It looked like to me it was just a congressional resolution. Okay. Well, okay. Okay, gotcha. So I had a busy day dealing with personal issues. I didn't get to visit with the chief yesterday, but I did spend time with Jason and Jimmy, and we talked a little bit about this. Again, this isn't, this isn't to me like, okay, this is where we stand, these are the only two issues that we support, and that's the end of the road. I personally think we need to get a statement out ASAP so the public doesn't, and the United States government doesn't think that we're just sitting on our hands and accepting what we're getting. So thanks for the opportunity to speak. We went into Committee of the Whole, and you know me, as a former member of this body, I'm not afraid to express my opinion. So thank you, Congress, for letting me have the opportunity.
Thank you, Assistant Chief. Congressman Potts, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Assistant Chief, you are the Assistant Chief and more than just a longtime elected official, but you sit in the chair of Assistant Chief, and I'm asking a question of the executive branch in this. Is this the strategy? Because granted, yes, this is what's impacting us right now, but there may be 1,000 other paper cuts by the middle of next year. Would you like 1,000 resolutions?
Assistant Chief.
Well, I'm going to key on a word that you said a little bit ago, and it's chaos. We are in the middle of chaos, and it's hard to sit down and make a plan whenever chaos is occurring. But that doesn't mean that we shouldn't go ahead and address certain issues that are going on. And the United States government, you said it, and I'm saying it again, they have a fiduciary responsibility and a trust responsibility to ensure that our minerals estate is taken care of, overseen, all of the things that are in the CFR. That superintendent is all over and in those CFRs. The CFRs are in process of being revised, but there still is a lot of responsibility and power given to the superintendent. As many of you are aware, there are actions that have already been taken place by the executive branch that are in motion, and this is just my own opinion, even going back to when I very first ran in 2012. We should have gotten out in front of this a long time ago, but I'm not going to play the coulda, shoulda, woulda game. There's a powerful and very meaningful group of individuals that are referenced as 1906ers, and that's fine, and I respect that, and I respect them, and I've respected them and their position throughout my time as an elected official. I've yielded to them. Here we are today. I'm not going to go so far as to say we got caught with our pants down, but what's going on with the executive branch of the United States is unprecedented, it's unexpected, and it is extremely radical, and there's no telling how much further it's going to go. Is there a plan? We're scrambling right now, and we are watching, observing, and trying to be calculated on decisions and actions that are taken.
Any other discussion, Congressman Potts?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Is our current strategy 1,000 different resolutions? Because what I'll say, and I've used this analogy a lot lately, if you're trapped in a room and the water's flowing, and there's a mop in the room, and the sink is overflowing, filling up the floor, the first thing you do is turn off the water, not pick up the mop. And it seems to me like a resolution that addresses two of overflowing water at this point is us picking up the mop. If that's the strategy that our executive branch wants to go with, I'm ready to file 1,000 resolutions, and I think this body would support 1,000 resolutions. Is that the strategy right now? And I know it's chaos, I'm not trying to be rude about it, but we've been elected to fight these fights. Is that the strategy we've got right now?
You guys are familiar with Chief Standing Bear. He's a very thoughtful man, and his mind never stops working. Is there a strategy, like a definitive strategy? Not that I am aware of. I've been involved in group text messages, and like I said a minute ago, we are scrambling as far as supporting resolutions. Is the strategy to pass resolutions? And no disrespect, and you know this, we don't pass resolutions, we pass executive orders. So my expectation is that the chief will, there will be executive orders forthcoming from the executive branch. Has he told me that directly? No. But knowing Chief Standing Bear and watching how he's operated over the last 14 years, serving on Congress with him or even observing Congress back whenever I was not, his mind is buzzing right now, I can promise you that. He's been around the block, he's a smart man, and I don't think there is a direct strategy, but we are operating in a situation of chaos, and I think this, right here, this resolution is just a good statement right now from the Congress and signed by the chief. And again, the main thing is that we are pointing out that they have a fiduciary responsibility that they are ignoring. that they are ignoring. So paper cuts and 25 resolutions, that's not my expectation. I think this is going to snowball, and we'll be able to react. We're not going to go into special, we can only go into special session every 10 days. So if we have to go into another special session when this one ends, so be it. And spring session is, well heck, it's right around the corner. Spring break is, what, the 14th through the 18th or something like that? Right after that, what is the first day of special session?
31st.
31st?
March 31st.
Okay. Well, so Congressman, those are just my thoughts and my expectations, and believe me, it's not just the members of Congress that are worried about this, and you know that. Again, thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Congressman Maker.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Yeah, just my opinion, as a member of this Osage tribe for many years, grew up around full-blood Osages, I've heard about their thoughts on the mineral state and what we were facing as a people all these years, not just this new government we're in now, or the O-Six Act. I mean, we're talking about a tribe of Native American Indians that was a powerful race on this continent. I think about all those things, too, not just the legal things, the court battle, the attorneys. There's a lot to this, and all our old people, they always said, there's a day that this might happen. I never thought I'd see it, I really didn't, especially the way it's been going on now from our, the government in Washington DC. But we're in it, and we all know what's going on. We watch the news, newspapers, we all know what's going on, and none of us like it. So we're in a battle here. We're just starting. We all know, everybody's got their own opinion, we have a month and a half, and this is like complete, total lack of empathy on anybody, even the trailer trash people that voted the mega guy. You know, it disappicts everybody, not just the Native Americans, all the tribes, but it affects us in a different way, because this is our land, and we do have all the old treaties and all the old statutes, and the Osage people, we are different than the other tribe because of the fact we did purchase our own property here back in 1871. We have all that. And if we had a government in Washington right now who actually cared and had empathy, and we have had those types of governments in the past, George Bush himself signed that public law to give us our sovereignty, a Republican. So we do know through the years, there's been a lot of cooperation from Washington with all the tribes. But the Osage, we sort of stand out differently because of the fact of our situation with the mineral state. And all you all have been to NCAI, and you know that every time they stand up and they have a resolution, most of the time it's excluding the Osage tribe, and that's why. We've all heard that, we've all been to NCAI. But I do, I agree, we have to make some kind of statement. I don't know exactly how it should be worded, or what should be in it, but I think a statement in general opposing the acts of the United States government at this time against the Osage people, I think as a body of this government, we do need to make some kind of statement as quickly as possible. So even if it falls on deaf ears, we still have to make some sort of a statement. I agree with Assistant Chief, he's up, he hears a lot, he knows a lot what's going on with this, we all do. But I do think we need to make some kind of statement today. I think Congresswoman Whitehorn has spoken with all the people involved, and we've got a pretty good handle on what we want to do, maybe not put so much technical things in this opening statement, because that, I'm sure it's going to come later, like Assistant Chief said, like Congressman Potts said, we're just starting. If we got to have another 1,000 resolution, okay, so be it. We got plenty of paper so far. So I do agree, we got to make some sort of statement now. That's my take. Thanks.
Thank you. Congresswoman Whitehorn.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I just wanted to say that I see what's happening at the federal level, and I disagree with so much of it. But to me, sitting in this chair, we've been elected by the Osage people to do Osage business, and the Osage business I see that's presented to us at this point in time is the matter of our agency. In the future, may there be some other things that affect our nation that we need to address? Yes, and I think we should address them as soon as they come down the hill at us. But for right now, I believe that we have this resolution or this appropriation to join the coalition of large tribes. I agree to that, to that application and us joining that membership, because they are the, they're the organizations that protect Indian country as a whole. To me, in my seat, I will protect any, I will come behind any tribal nation that needs our help. But right now, sitting in my seat, I protect the Osage people, I'm for joining these other tribal organizations that advocate for larger issues, and I think they should do that, and we should join them. So right now, I'm going to just let you guys know, I'm going to read this bill in when we get to that point on the agenda.
Thank you. Any other comments, discussion?
Madam Speaker.
Yes, Congressman Potts.
I make a motion to exit the executive, or exit committee of the whole.
There's a motion and a second to exit committee of the whole. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Any opposed? No. Motion passes. We are now on reports of select committees.
Thank you, Speaker. Rules, ethics, and engrossment met regarding Bill Number ONCA 2535, an act to appropriate the sum of $150,000 to the Osage Home Health to cover the costs associated with Osage Home Health and to establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor is Congresswoman Revar. The final committee action due pass is properly engrossed with yes votes from Big Horse, Goodfox, and Keen. We also met regarding Bill Number ONCA 2536, an act to authorize $200,000 of residual assets in the capital asset fund to the Wajaji Early Learning Academy for a generator and an automatic transfer switch and to establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor is Congresswoman Revar. Final committee action due pass is properly engrossed with yes votes from Big Horse, Goodfox, and Keen. Lastly, we met regarding Bill Number ONCA 2538, an act to amend ONCA 2383 to provide a supplemental appropriation to the executive branch in the amount of $60,000 of non-tribal funds and to establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor is Congresswoman Revar. Final committee action due pass is properly engrossed with yes votes from Big Horse, Goodfox, and Keen. Thank you.
Thank you. We're still on reports of select committees.
Good morning. Thank you, Speaker. Assistant Chief and colleagues, the appropriations committee met March 3, 2025, to discuss ONCA 2539 and act to amend ONCA 2473 to provide supplemental appropriations to the executive branch in the amount of $3,664,602 and to establish an alternate effective date. I am the sponsor, along with co-sponsor, Congresswoman Redcorn. Final committee action due pass with amendments. Voting yes. Revar, Redcorn, Big Horse, Hamilton, Shaw, and Whitehorn.
Thank you very much. Are there any additional reports of select committees?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Assistant Chief, colleagues, and listening audience. Commerce, Gaming, and Land Committee met yesterday, March 3, 2025, to consider Bill Number ONCA 2540, an act to amend the tobacco tax code to include the tobacco compact tax, to state the distribution of the tribal portion of the tobacco compact tax, to repeal the tobacco tax relief fund, and to establish an alternate effective date. The sponsor was Congresswoman Maria Whitehorn. Final committee action was due pass with amendments. Voting yes was Goodfox, Tillman, Whitehorn, Keen, and Big Horse. Thank you.
Thank you, Congressman. That was reports on standing committees. We're now on bills and resolutions on first reading.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Members of Congress, I'd like to read in ONCR 2507, a resolution to denounce the United States federal government's disregard for the sovereign status of the Osage Nation as is evident by acting on inherent trust functions without consultation or notice.
Thank you, Congresswoman. ONCR 2507 will go, will be placed on general order day two on tomorrow's agenda. We are now on general order day one.
Good morning. Thank you. Reading ONCR 2505, a resolution to support the Osage Nation's membership in the coalition of large tribes, Colt.
Good morning. Reading in, reading in ONCR 2506, a resolution to approve the Office of Fiscal Performance and Review Annual Audit Plan for fiscal year 2025, submitted by Moss Adams.
Thank you. With that objection, ONCR 2505 and ONCR 2506 will face the third reading on today's agenda We are now on general order day two, where amendments may be proposed. Just a moment.
I'm going to have a question for a brief.
Thank you very much. We're now in recess.